I will call the regular session of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Joka?
Here. Please join me for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed and amended.
Hold on.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. We have an agenda. Public comments. Are there any?
That's why we spread those shirts out.
Do we have anybody that would like to provide public comment in the boardroom? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Item number three is claims and payments. I will make a motion that we approve, that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and direct to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Second.
James?
This week's expenditures total $390,648.32, of which jail commissary is $25,207, Sheriff's Office $80,870, maintenance department $26,188, conservation $34,905, and finally, secondary roads $43,881. Everything looks normal.
What was the $80,000 for, James?
I'm sorry?
What was the $80,000 for? Was that total or one specific?
For the sheriff's office? There was one large claim on here. Looks like there was dive rescue equipment in the amount of $20,869. And then the only other large one was inmate meals for food summit service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on our routine fall maintenance activities. They are well underway. We are ditch cleaning throughout the county. We are placing spot rock in areas that need rock so that we can touch those up and prepare them for the coming winter. And then lastly, we are receiving several calls, some phone calls about dust control being bladed up and that I would say that that is a condition of our, the permits that we do give people that as of October 1st, we are allowed to blade, smooth the road. So in case we do have a deep freeze anytime now, those roads are ready for that, for us to occur. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yolando?
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. I just had a couple of slides I wanted to show you from our commission meeting. We didn't get a chance to do it last week because we were down in Des Moines doing our semi-annual training. But just real quick, if you go to the next slide, real quick. This is one I wanted to share. I want to put a red face on Mr. Craig White in the standpoint of, we really do want to recognize our outstanding veterans within our community that are doing great things. And so with this, this month, October, we recognize Craig White for all the exceptional work that he's been doing, particular with the Honor Flights. I was a, had some skin in the game with Honor Flight being one, to be able to go on it and had two veterans that I escorted. But it wasn't Yolando, it was Craig White and his staff that allowed that to happen. And so these veterans are really taking an opportunity to go see these monuments, but also to come back home and to actually be recognized, in particular, our Vietnam veterans. And so Craig, sir, if we could, from one veteran to another, I'm not a Vietnam veteran. I am a veteran of nine combat deployments. But from one veteran to another, I just want to say thank you for all the great work you do right here in Blackhawk County and the Cedar Valley, sir. And you guys can see. And I think that term, you know, unselfishly gives back to his community, is one that a lot of us are going to try to endure as we go forward and try to push forward in that standpoint. Just a couple more slides and I'll get out of the way here. You can go to the next one. There was a group of young ladies who, and gentlemen, who, for whatever reason, they went in front of the Pinecrest Building and the Pinecrest Building had a whole bunch of weeds in front of it. And this group came out and pulled up all the weeds out of the Pinecrest Building and really made it a beautiful place. Again, winter's coming in, but they want to do that annually. And so I take my hat off to them. We were able to also do a ramp for one of our veterans in the Evansdale area. And just another slide is showing you that ramp. One other slide and then we'll get out of the way and go ahead. Next one, because some of these are dated because it was early in the month. Keep going. And another, another, because I'll send these out. I didn't want to send them out until I actually came before the Board of Supervisors. But in particular, looking at our comparisons from August to September, we really did have a pretty good month in September. We ended up bringing in 173 veterans for the month of September. Out of that 173, 35 of them were new. So that's our highest number in about eight months where we had new veterans. And that still is where the rubber meets the road because as we bring in additional veterans, when we're looking at, we have about 7,800 veterans in the Blackhawk County area, but we only have 1,800 of them that are receiving VA services through our office in that standpoint. So when we see these new veterans coming in, it really opens up the door for opportunities. Next slide. Some of the other ones that we're seeing is, again, with the increase of veterans coming in, we had to increase those service work, that is, all the VA forms that we do for our particular veterans. We also had a little uptick with other applications. That's veterans applying for like driver's plates and driver's license, getting veteran driver's license on their IDs. Next slide. One that we've seen was a downtick, but we just had a meeting this morning with the outpatient clinic. Mental health is a big issue. And so we just had a Zoom meeting this morning for about 30 minutes with the outpatient clinic, how to deal with veterans who are suffering either through substance abuse or mental health. And so we had a nurse on and that was just giving us updates on what we should and shouldn't do. In particular, we've had a couple of veterans who we've had to recommend inpatient to the DOM, that's the Department of Mental Health down in Des Moines or up in St. Cloud, Minnesota. So we are seeing those challenges where we're starting to make recommendations to get veterans the assistance that they need associated with mental health in that standpoint. And then we had an uptick on our pension and DIC. The DIC, again, is where a widow is getting a pension from the, I guess, the transition of her husband. He died from a service-connected condition. Now she's entitled to a widow's pension for the rest of her life. Next slide. And then the last, this group that stands out in the red is our Vietnam veterans. As you know, just recently, we found out the sad news of General Powell dying from, they said it's COVID-related, but he's actually died from complications from Agent Orange because he had myeloma. Also, General Ordinaro, who was my commanding general when I was boots on ground in Vietnam, not Vietnam, but in Iraq, he also died this month of complications from Agent Orange exposure. So herbicide exposure is really, it's really taken its toll on some of our Vietnam veterans. In fact, this Friday, I have to go to a funeral for a Vietnam veteran who was a commissioner for the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. We'll lay him to rest this Friday. Next slide. And then some of the expenses from general usage to veterans. In particular, we've seen an uptick in transportation where we have veterans requesting gas cards or bus passes. In particular, the gas cars, the reason why is right now, the DAV who provides the transportation in Iowa City, they're having problems with getting volunteers to take our veterans down to Iowa City. So to offset that, they don't have enough drivers. So to offset that, we've been providing gas cards for the veterans who need it. We do scrutinize that because there's veterans who, if they're drive down to a appointment in Iowa City, there is a gas stipend and Iowa City will send them. So we have to scrutinize who's getting it, but we did see an uptick last month on providing help for the veterans who needed it for transportation. Other than that, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to really do, take five minutes out to recognize a great veteran that we have in our community. And we should continue to do that each and every month because there are a lot of hidden heroes right here in Blackhawk County who's doing not just great things for the country when they were serving, but what they're doing to the community right now in that standpoint. Stand by to address any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? How about on Zoom or on the phone? Any department heads or elected officials that would like to provide an update? Item number five, approval of minutes from October 12th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. The minutes are approved. We have two hearings today. One is ordinance number 77-259, rezone request by Chad and Heather Coffin. The other is an ordinance request number 770260 by Robert Rogers. Item number seven, the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Item number A, 8A is a proclamation in support of the striking workers at Deer and Company. Mr. Veder, do you have that proclamation?
Yes.
Would you like to read it, please?
Sure. Whereas workers at John Deere plants across Iowa and Illinois have gone on strike for the first time in a generation to secure better pay, retirement benefits, healthcare, and working conditions. And whereas these striking workers include the members of UAW Local 838, many of whom live, work, and pay taxes right here in Blackhawk County. And whereas John Deere is now making record-setting profits and paying exorbitant salaries and bonuses to their top executives. And whereas Blackhawk County purchases John Deere products almost every year across multiple departments. And whereas we purchase these products knowing that they are well-made with pride. And whereas it is our expectation when purchasing John Deere products that the workers who build them are properly compensated by the company they make so profitable. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim our support for the striking UAW members at John Deere plants in Iowa and Illinois.
Move to approve. Second. Comments or questions?
I just want to say I've just been inspired. I've stopped down to visit them in one way or another every day of the strike so far. And it's, I do believe that corporate greed at some of our largest companies in this country has gotten out of control. And these workers are standing up for their families, but really standing up on behalf of all working people. And it's really inspiring to see all the different ways the community is coming out to support them, all the small businesses that are giving discounts. And it just shows what an important part of the fabric these workers are in our community.
Chris, I just had a question. I know we mentioned in the first sentence about John Deere plants across Iowa and Illinois. And I wondered if there was a reason why we maybe just selected those two, as I think there were other plants across, I think, Illinois, but also Kansas and possibly a couple of others. But I just didn't know if we wanted to just select those two, which is just a question I had.
No, we should, we can certainly include the others. And so if you want that reworded, then we can just reword it to John Deere plants across America.
Okay.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I guess I'd just add, I do think, like I say, we're very fortunate in this community to have the John Deere facilities that we do have here. I think it's great that they're making such great profits and the leadership is doing that. But we are fortunate to have the people here and the workers here that make that profit possible. So thank you for having us on the agenda.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Item 9A, contracts and agreements. We have a resolution that the contract extension number two between Holbach Enterprises Doing Business as Randalls Incorporated for deli services at the courthouse with a term of one year, November 1st, 2021 to
Hold on.
October 31st, 2022, be approved and for the chair to sign the contract as recommended
by Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent. Any comments or questions?
They're just doing a great job down there for us. The food's always great.
It is good food. Yep. I gained about 10 pounds.
Stop eating.
It's those cheesy potatoes, Dan.
Yeah.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Item 10A is a motion at the personal requisition for an information technology director, pay grade GS-29, full-time replacement, be posted and direct the human resource director, Amanda Fessenmeyer, to begin the hiring process. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye? All those opposed say no. Item 10B is a resolution that the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for LFM-5020, long dash 7X dash 07, LFM-5015, long dash 7X dash 07, Canfield Road grade and pave, and Brandon Road grade and pave, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same and authorize and direct auditor to make final payment in the amount of $179,841.90 with a total project cost of $772,308.27, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer. Project contracted at $817,504.82 total, liquidated damages assessed, $0. Contractor Aspro Incorporated, Waterloo, Iowa.
Move.
Second. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. As is customary, when we get to this portion of the project closeout, I wanted to show you some photos of the project before and after, first slide, Kim. So this was a unique project where it was actually two different sites. The Canfield Road site is at the overpass of Highway 20. And then the other site was in the very southeast portion of the county on Brandon Road as it intersects with Blackhawk Buchanan Road. Both, the reason we tied them together is that they both had deteriorated concrete. It had been down for many years. It was cracking, giving a very poor ride, difficult for us to plow snow in the winter. When this project was put out for letting by the DOT, or by us, excuse me, last fall, we thought that Ragbri was going to take Joseph Road and actually go through Brandon Road, through the project area. So we put in some contract provisions that said the work had to either start before Ragbri was coming to Waterloo area or could start after Ragbri. And then, as you said, the project was awarded to Aspro for $817,000. Next slide, Kim. Here's a look at the Canfield Road overpass area. Again, it was about 65-year-old concrete. It was badly deteriorated, cracking, difficult to keep the snow plowed in the winter just due to some of the rutting and depressions in that concrete pavement. Work had to start by July 16th this past summer. For this portion of the project, the Canfield Road portion, there were liquidated damages to be assessed of $1,000 per day. And then the length of the project was about 3,200 feet minus the length of the bridge over Highway 20. Next slide. Here's some of the pre-project conditions. Again, you can see that the faulting, the concrete cracking at the joints in particular was very bad. It had been getting bad for at least 10 years. You can see some of the shoulder in the upper right slide, again, deterioration of that shoulder area. Last year, we were able to, our county forces were able to come in and put a few patches in. That's what we're doing down here in this left-hand corner where our guys actually came in and patched some of the panels. But it was just too much for us to replace all of it. Next slide, Kim. So we wanted to come in and remove all of the concrete, and that's what's going on on these slides, the actual work. You can see the concrete is being broken up here. It's being removed there in the left-hand photo. Then the top middle, you can see that the concrete has been removed. The old subgrade is existing there. This is looking off to the, looking to the south there in the top photo. And then the bottom photo is looking to the north, the curves on Canfield Road as you're approaching Dubuque Road. We did put some subdrains in on this project. And then we rocked it. And then finally, the last photo, you can see the asphalt being placed. Next slide, Kim. So this is a look at both directions of the project from about the overpass vicinity, looking both to the north and then to the south. And then the project was completed before that deadline that we needed it to be completed by. No liquidated damages were assessed. We did have a slight project overrun due to the DOT wanting us to install a message board, I believe in the Highway 20, the ramp vicinity area. So we had a slight overrun on this, on this portion of the project. Next slide. So moving on to the Brandon Road project, again, it was very badly deteriorated concrete. Our job, the contractor's job, was to remove that concrete, place new rock, geogrid, and then place asphalt. 12 calendar days were provided by contract for this work. Again, the liquidated damages were $1,000 per day. Next slide. Here's looking to, as you're approaching that Blackhawk Buchanan Road, which is a north-south road. This is looking directly east then at the existing, the former roadway. You can see, again, it was concrete with very badly deteriorated joints, giving a rough ride. This is a commuter route to the Cedar Rapids area from four Lepore people in particular, that southeast portion of the county. So it does get quite a bit of traffic. Next slide. Just some other views of the project work before work started. Next slide. And then this is a short section of roadway. It's only 500 feet long that had not been resurfaced in asphalt. This portion needed to be removed. Here's some pictures of the work, removing the old concrete, placing the rock, and then finally the asphalt. Last slide, Kim. So the work was completed before, I believe, the end of September was the completion date. Only nine calendar days were used. 12 were provided by the contract. And then no, because of this, no liquidated damages were assessed. So then we did have an underrun of almost $58,000 on this portion of the project, giving us a total underrun of about 6% on the project. So I would recommend today that you vote to accept this, the final acceptance of the work, and we be allowed to pay Aspro the retainers that we've been holding. Can I answer any questions?
Comments, questions?
Appreciate the pictures. I was going to say, take good photos of it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Item number 10C. This is one of our two hearings. It is now approximately 9:25 a.m. I will make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no.
Motion away from the first reading as notice was public October 11th.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye? All those opposed say no.
Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
We have a motion and a second. Seth, you're on.
Okay, yeah. This is a request at 6734, Pointer Road, Coffin Rezone. Request rezoned 4.95 acres from agricultural district to AR, agricultural residential district, in order to allow for the construction of three new single-family homes. It was moved by Shafer and Sigby C.H. to deny the rezoned request for 4.95 acres from AR, in order to allow for the construction. The request ended up getting approved against the denial, and they approved the request through roll call. The one parcel containing the 4.95 acres for the proposed rezoned area has been zoned to agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. The surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with similar homes in the zoned agricultural district to north, southeast, and west, and agricultural district, agricultural residential district to the south, and agriculture residential district, AL Agricultural Limited District, ALR Agricultural Residential District, and the city of Gilbertville to the west. The rezon area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map. The surrounding area is designated as agriculture to the north and east, residential to the south, agricultural residential parks and open space in the city of Gilbertville to the west. Another area to be rezoned is located in a special flood hazard area. The applicant wishes to rezon 4.95 acres from AR in order to construct three new single-family homes, parcels large enough to accommodate three developed lots will meet the lot and size requirements of the AR by being greater than 1.5 acres and wider than 150 feet. The land is not currently in farm production. Proposed rezoned area is not located within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport land use and height overlay review area. The technical review committee noted the lease is score in close proximity to Gilbertville and didn't have not any issues with the request.
Seth, you had two denials. Did they comment at all what they were voting? No one? I'm assuming something with the protection of ag land, but?
Yeah, probably, yeah, either the closeness of agriculture or Gilbertville. So they just voted no. But the other three did vote.
They did. Okay, thank you.
So where's? Anybody, was there anybody in attendance that was against?
There were a few neighbors that were in the audience and they were all noticed for this meeting. There were some that were against the request, you know, kind of like, I think one of the statements was that they didn't want more traffic near their home or they didn't want more people there because there was kind of like a wildlife area or trees to the south. And other than that, it was, you know, just, you know, basically, you know, just didn't want to see more homes being built out there. So there were some people that were against the request, yes.
Was there any comment on the drive or the road to those properties as far as where that would be located or?
I believe the applicant can address that, the road access.
Show it on that map, will you? Go up there and show us on the map where that's at. Where the?
The drive right now is coming into center here
Yeah.
to the home there. It is what our, I guess, proposal would be, is that it's going to come in
Coming in the center.
off of here at an angle.
Oh, okay, off that same drive.
Where they're coming in off Pointer Road is where I want to know.
I see.
Off of Pointer Road?
Yeah.
Right in the same drive. And it will come at an angle like that to go back to the other property.
There. And if I can have you approach the podium now, Mr. Coffin, I assume, correct?
Yes.
Good morning. And provide your name and?
Chad Coffin. So basically, that is where we're proposing to put the driveway portion of it. And I guess other than that, I don't know of anything else that, I mean, do you have any questions or?
Where's the closest fire flood at?
Fire?
Yeah, for fire protection. Where's the closest?
Gilbertville?
Yeah. No, the, where you get the water from for a fire hydrant.
Hydrant?
Hydrant, you mean for their?
For the fire, if you have a fire out there.
Well, they won't have a well or what do you, I mean, as far as the fire hydrant, this is not in the city limits, I guess.
That's just outside of Gilbertville. So I'm not exactly quite sure how, I mean, I don't know if Gilbertville city limits is pretty close, so
Right, I don't.
Probably, yeah, probably a hydrant within a half mile.
I would assume. I don't know if there's one actually at the cemetery or not. The cemetery is right to the left of it, I guess. I don't know if there.
And Supervisor Little and Schwartz, Mr. Coffin handed us a document showing how the drive, the proposed driveway to the properties would be diagonal, I guess, from the current driveway.
uh, the proposed driveway to the properties would be diagonal, I guess, from the current driveway, and then run to the edge of the property and down into the three proposed lots. Yes.
Got it.
And that's your property?
Yes.
So it's?
Yep.
So they'd be sharing one driveway and another?
Correct, yep.
Are these properties sold?
No. Any other?
Any neighbors say comment to you, I guess, that have comments for you that?
Uh, directly no, in a meeting, yes.
Just in a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And it was regarding traffic for the most part and?
Yes, and the driveway. Yep, and the, the timber area, which, the timber area, what you see all in red, that is all actually, right now, like a hayfield. It's not really been kept up as a hayfield. It hasn't been like reseeded or anything. It's been cut, but I, it's not very productive. And where it stops, right in the back, that's where the timber ground is, if you head your arrow down. But the property actually extends all the way down to the end of that. And then the, um, other adjoining neighbors' timber would be right next to it, which we are not gonna be doing anything with the timber. I mean, the, it's gonna be the same, the, that lot, the, the bottom lot will go, have the timber will go with it. So, you know, whoever purchases that or whatever, I'm assuming is gonna want, 'cause I think it ends up being like six acres of timber that they would have access to from their home. I mean, it, it should be a very desirable place. I would assume that, you know, it, they should sell well and bring hopefully some revenue to the county that way in tax and also, you know, bring the value of the neighbors' there home up. I mean, it, it very well should. I mean, we're not proposing, what we're gonna put into it is not gonna be anything to do with, you know, they're gonna be good homes. It's not gonna be, you know, bring trailers in and stuff and have a hunting shack back there or anything like that. I mean, we are gonna do this as a good, you know, a nice, single-family home to be built in the country.
And you currently live at 6734 Pointer, correct?
We do not.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
Not to say that we won't, um, because it is an older home, and if this stuff goes through, we may take up one of those lots ourselves and build there.
Any other questions for Mr. Coffin?
I guess I got a question.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll get, uh, we're gonna get to your opportunity. Any other questions for Mr. Coffin? None?
None.
All right, the gentleman that requested to speak. If you could approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Uh, good morning, my name's Steve Lambert. I live at 6802 Pointer Road, directly next door. Um, I guess I didn't get to see what the diagonal road was. I guess that's my biggest concern is it is the approach to these properties and how they're gonna get to these properties. Um, my other question was, is when I got the letter, it has Chad and Heather Evens on the top of this. I just wanted to make sure this has nothing to do with Chad Evens, the farmer, which is the land completely around it. I just seen that there was a misprint because I didn't know if there was a, another proposal here.
Now, where's your property in relationship to this proposed change, sir?
Oh, I'm, I'm directly right next door.
Gotcha.
So it'd be this property line right here. I actually, or, I'm sorry, right here.
Your east.
And I actually purchased this acre of land right here within the last year. 'Cause my biggest concerns are now I'm gonna have three more neighbors. Actually, four, once somebody actually lives in 6734.
Okay. Uh, what's your last name again, sir?
Lambert.
Lambert.
Yeah, I didn't have a, Chad and Heather Even, I, I, I did have the, I guess I had the wrong, wrong name in the notice, but I didn't know if the request was just a administrative error. Probably, you know, carried over from the request by the Evens.
Yeah, it's a correct in all our records.
Any questions for Mr. Lambert? How much land do you have, sir?
Uh, I just purchased one acre, and my actual lot size was less, so I believe it's 1.3/4 of an acre.
Gotcha, okay.
Total.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You certainly can have a copy of this if you'd like.
Yeah, I was gonna hand them this one, actually. Would you like the copy? Here you go, sir.
I guess my other question would be? Other question would be, so they would hold them to this as far as this design goes? That it just wants as if it is passed, that it just doesn't change?
Seth?
No. The rezone will not change. It will be approved, and then they'll come back and plot it.
It'll stay as is.
It'll stay as is.
Okay.
It can't be changed.
Do we have any others that would like to speak on this proposal? Do we have any written correspondence?
No.
Any other comments or questions by the board? All right, we have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to closing the hearing, say no. The hearing is closed. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes. The ordinance adoption, I'll make a motion that the ordinance amending number, ordinance number 36 has amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by writing subsection number 259 to section VI VI, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described in the above requests submitted by Chad and Heather, Heather Coffin, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-259.
You said you made the motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes. All right, the proposed rezone is approved. Uh, item 10D, it is approximately 9:37, and this is a motion to receive and place on file proof publication of a notice of public hearing for proposed rezones 77-260, Rogers Rezone. It has been moved, I will second it. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
Motion in favor of the first reading is notice was published on October 11th, 2021, Law of the Courier.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say no?
Motion to close the hearing is oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seth?
Okay, yeah, uh, this is a, at 81, uh, 8133 Buckridge Road, Rogers Rezone. It's a request to rezone 3.76 acres from AL Agricultural Limited District and AR Agricultural Residential District to our agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home. It's moved by AG and Segna by Bojor to approve the request to rezone 3.76 acres from AL Agricultural Limited District and AR Agricultural Residential District to, uh, our residential district in order to construct one new single-family home, um, 8133 Buckridge Road, Bojor to approve, carried unanimously. The one parcel containing the 3.76 acres for the proposed rezone area has been zoned AL Agricultural Limited and AR Agricultural Residential District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. The surrounding area consists of Buckridge Road subdivision and several rural homes in a zoned agricultural district and AR agricultural residential district to north, southeast, and west. Rezone area is designated as residential on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The surrounding area is designated as residential and agricultural to the west. The surrounding area is residential and parks and open space to the north, south, and east. Approximately less than 1.5% of the rezone areas located in a special flood hazard area according to FEMA. Um, but however, none of the rezone areas located in a special flood hazard area is designated by the FEMA preliminary floodplain map that has yet to be adopted by Blackhawk County. Um, the, uh, the site has a land evaluation of score of 39 and least a score of 147 indicating a low agricultural value. Uh, the applicant wishes to rezone 3.76 acres from AL and AR to AR, uh, in order to construct one new single-family home. The parcel is large enough to accommodate one additional developed lot that will meet the lot requirements for the AR Agricultural Residential District and by being greater than 1.5 acre size and wider than 150 feet. Uh, the portion of the rezone area that is zoned AL was zoned that way due, because it was a private airstrip that was located there. Uh, the applicant is planning to construct one new single-family home. Um, the southwest, uh, portion of the parcel, road access is coming off of Buckridge Road. If the rezone is approved, the applicant will next have to apply for a minor plat to subdivide the property. Uh, the applicant previously requested to rezone 71.18 acres from AL Agricultural Residential District and AR Agricultural Residential District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to construct two additional homes on the northern airstrip at the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting on August 17, 2021. Uh, that, this request was unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Committee, um, Commission. Uh, this new request is different because the applicant is requesting to rezone 3.76 acres to AR to construct one additional home. The existing home at 8133 Buckridge Road is being rezoned to AR as well. Um, in addition, uh, since the airstrip is no longer involved, uh, there's no need for any variances. Rezone and minor plat must be approved to build one additional home in the rezone area and subdivide the lot from the main parcel. It should be noted that the covenants for, uh, Buckridge Incorporated were recorded in 1975, were never renewed and expired in 1996. Buckridge Incorporated's covenants can be renewed with the assistance of an attorney and approved by the majority of the members of Buckridge Incorporated. Uh, Robert Rogers does, uh, there's a, uh, has a notarized agreement between him and Buckridge Incorporated that was signed in 1988 that allowed him to build a single-family home, but not two single-family homes. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on September 21st, 2020 unanimously approved the rezone request. Uh, the proposed rezone area is designated as Zone B within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport land use and height overlay review area. The maximum height allowed for a single-family home is 35 feet, and the elevation of the site is 900 feet. Total height and elevation for the site is 935 or 680 feet less than the allowable height of 1,623 feet. In addition, no impacts are anticipated regarding the proposed land use for the building of a single-family home. Therefore, all conditions are met. Um, the technical review committee noted that alternative septic and well systems may be required due to the sandy soils in the area. And that's the same, uh, the staff report.
Any questions for Seth?
I think so.
Good, all right, thank you.
Would Mr. Rogers like the comment?
My name is Robert Rogers, the owner of 8133. I'd just like to get it approved so my son can build a house out there.
How many members are in Buckridge, or how many members are there of the Buckridge Association? Any idea?
25, maybe, roughly.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Rogers? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Are there any others that would like to provide comment? Yes, ma'am?
I am Carol Wilkinson. My property is 81 through 25 Buckridge. My eastern border is next to Rogers, and my, all of my southwest border is along the runway. So half of our property of 3 point something, between 3 and 4 acres, is adjacent to the property, of which there is 7 acres. The rest of Buckridge generally are, have only 4 acres. So when they requested to buy the runway, uh, they also had to apply to have a house built on the runway, um, property. Um, that was all, um, according to the rules. And the rules have been followed, and that is as it should be. My objection is that the goodwill of the whole neighborhood, uh, which is a unique neighborhood, a unique placement, because our western border is the railroad track. Our eastern border is the Shell Rock, the confluence of the Shell Rock and the, and Cedar River. Our southern border is C-57, and our northern border is Winslow Road. So it is a confined area. That they once had to have approval of the members of Buckridge to build on the runway property, which was identified by the FFA, FAA as a private runway, and is listed in all the airway, uh, maps as a private runway. That here again, they're asking for special consideration to buy another house or to build another house at that property, which is now a closed runway. I don't know how it's closed on the maps, the FAA maps, but it is a closed runway. So my consideration and my idea or my feeling is while the county zoning commission can follow the rules and set, do it, follow the rules by the law, but the goodwill of the neighborhood is again at odds with the idea of another property being close. You have to consider, people have moved and bought their acres just there so that we do not have to have fences between. When you look at the new areas along Union Road and the new developments, how much, how often do you see private fences between the small areas and their boxes? In Buckridge, we have no fences except to contain our horses, um, kennels for our dogs, um, and it is an open area, and it is quite lovely. And, uh, if I see, if this area, this 3 acres that they want to, um, build on, there, there is still the run, rest of the runway open. And initially, they considered having, um, another, um, dwelling built at the end of the runway, which is in question. That I see perhaps on down the line, they would again ask to have it rezoned so that they could build farther down on the runway. I, I object to this application. Um, there has not been goodwill since we've moved in in 92, or, excuse me, in 93. Uh, and I object to the rezoning of this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a lovely area. It's unique generally for the county. I'm just curious about the runway area right now. What, uh, the residents utilize it? I, I assume it's shared space?
No, not at all.
No?
Not at all.
Utilized?
I beg your pardon?
How are people using it?
We don't use it.
Okay. Who maintains it? Is it?
No, uh, there are incidences that are not pleasant to, for that.
All right, any other, uh, questions?
I, I leave it up to the county to decide, you know, whether it's important that the son live close to his parents or whether the goodwill of the whole neighborhood is more important.
Seth, how many other people were at the meeting that objected to this?
Um, there was quite a few, probably, probably around 15, I would say.
Did they all speak?
Um, I think most of them spoke.
Yes.
And it was integrity of the community, of the area that they felt was?
The people along the runway, uh, there are seven families, seven families. The people along the runway, there are seven families, seven families are along the runway and the children have never, ever gone on the runway.
Okay.
You feel that this will change things? You feel that this changes things though? You said they've never gone on the runway. You feel that?
No, no, they have never gone on the runway. They were not allowed on the runway, which is proper because, you know, the airplane's coming in and so on, which.
When's the last time an airplane come in?
Single engines.
Pardon me?
What was your question, sir?
When is the last time an airplane?
Early this summer. Mr. Rogers was out early this summer, but there has not been anyone on the runway since early spring and no one came on the runway unless by invitation because it is private.
So the last time an airplane came in was within the past year?
Yes, Mr. Rogers' plane, he flew then. And I don't know that they, I don't know. I love seeing them planes come in and take, him come in and take off. It was a delight of the neighborhood, but.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I know the last problem we had up there was many years ago was railroad. Had a lot of problems with them. That must have been corrected because I haven't heard anything from neighbors lately on that.
Do we have any others that would like to provide comment in regard to this? Mr. Rogers?
I've lost my medical and I haven't flown in a year and a half. So that was the last time a plane came into the airstrip.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
When I would fly, I had big worries of horses getting out, dogs getting out, people getting on the runway. When you come from the southeast end, it comes up the hill and you cannot see about 800 feet from the river. When you press that top of the hill, whether there's an animal or a person on that runway, they're going to create a problem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
May I have you back?
Yes, ma'am.
According to the flight, according to someone who knows about landing, that when there is a landing, an airstrip, the pilot is supposed to circle the area to clear the runway, to see that the runway is clear and to see that whoever is on the runway has a chance to get on. So where children were never on the runway and my horses did get out a couple times and he, but they're quarter horses and they love to run the quarter mile of the runway. But that was not a common thing. It happened as it is whenever you have people taking care of your horses and leaving gates open. So it's not a common thing and I always apologized and I, Mr. Rogers never actually helped me get the horses back in. So it is a goodwill thing and I just want you to understand that it is a goodwill thing. But I object to having the runway divided like that because if it is divided in one place, it will seem to some thinking, well, we can do it at that place, we can do it farther at the other end and who knows what's going to happen then.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right. There's been a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. The hearing is closed. We have a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. It's been moved by Mr. Little. I will make a second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
We have the ordinance adoption that the ordinance, amending ordinance number 36 says amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2, 1999. By adding subsection number 260 to section VI six, paragraph VB, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Robert Rogers and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-260.
It's all moved.
Agreed.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
No.
All right. Item 10E, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Dr. Ingone was not available because she had a prior commitment, so Josh is going to provide the update from the Public Health Department. Josh?
Thank you, Board. Just a brief update for you all today on our current COVID-19 cases, cases as well as some updates on the COVID-19 vaccines. As of yesterday morning, there were 20,276 positive cases reported today in Blackhawk County, 18,875 recoveries. We are at 10.5% average of positivity, 351 deaths, and then working with our healthcare partners, 160,660 total doses of COVID-19 vaccines administered in Blackhawk County according to 80,778 completed vaccine series. Our vaccination status as of again yesterday morning, 67% of Blackhawk County residents aged 12 and older have received at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine. And compared to the state, we are a little above the state average of 66.2% for the state. Some updates regarding the COVID-19 vaccines. The FDA met last week to consider booster doses for both the Moderna vaccine as well as the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Both of those were recommended for emergency use authorization to FDA, but that authorization hasn't been submitted yet as of this morning, although we are expecting it here in the next couple of days. The recommendations for the Moderna booster are the same as the Pfizer, six months after the second dose. And then the recommendations for the Johnson &amp; Johnson booster are for two months after the first dose for all who received it. And then one additional update on a vaccine, FDA will be meeting next week on the 26th October to discuss Pfizer vaccine for the five to 11-year-old age group.
All right. Any questions for Josh? Any supervisors have an update in regard to COVID? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board.
Item number 11 is our work session in regard to consideration of all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding.
Good morning. I'm going to share my screen here quick with the group. I apologize. I had technical difficulties this morning, so I am limited on the number of spreadsheets I have just based off of having to get it on a zip drive rather than accessing it on the network folder here. But so what I would like to do today is go through and have a discussion on our projects that we've been discussing in our ARP Subcommittee meetings. I would like to go over a list of potential projects that we would like to complete in what we would call Phase One. And remember, Phase One would be FY '22, so that would be the remaining of this fiscal year. So anything that kind of gets approved in this fiscal, or in this Phase One, we should see in a budget amendment coming up here in December. And then Phase Two, we would be looking at discussing during our budget sessions here coming up in January. That would be to be completed in FY '23. And then finally, Phase Three would be in FY '24. So we are kind of looking out a ways there. So what I have on the screen right now is Washburn's plans for Phase One. I do want to get Ben in front of you first just because he is the only non-departmental head that is going to be speaking to his, to his list, and so I wanted to kind of get him up and get him out of here if he needed to go. So with that, I'll let, I'll let Ben kind of talk about these projects that he has going on.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
So over the years, we've had some projects come up that we've been doing. We've been talking about some of these already for budgeting. You approved the manhole replacement for 25,000. We've been planning on doing that. Weather got in our way and then we'd recently heard about this funding that we could use and want to work it into this project or this phase of the projects. Go back up to number one, lagoon valve replacement and repairs. That's at the lagoon. This came up in our DNR inspection that we needed to address. The valves moved into inside of the manhole. The valve stems no longer work from the ground manhole cover, so we have to go down in and either, I've been talking to the engineer, either move those back with hydraulic pressure or cut the pipe off and replace the valve in the place it needs to be. We've kind of talked about that before with our review of the DNR report. The pump panel upgrades is something that James and I looked at. This is the individual stations. There's 147 that I know about there and the, they're put on a wood post. It has a really old fiberglass enclosure for the electronics. My proposal is to replace the entire electronic panel. We have a lot of corrosion on these. There's a red light on the top. It's a visual alarm that causes people to call for service call. Some of those are being burned out, broken, just really old. So the new panel, post, new wiring to the pump, this will get us set up for a longevity that will last for years. We're just seeing a lot of them. The posts are getting rotten, bending over. The gravities kind of get into the frosts, get into the post being level. Those are going to be quite expensive because of the electrical panel is about $1,500 each. So that along with the labor, post, wiring, electrical things that need to happen will get quite expensive and so we're proposing right now to do between one-third to one-half in this phase of the process. Another thing is the air release valves. I'd like to have those replaced. It's something that need to be done in about five to 10 years, but it could be done now. There are seven locations with air release valves, so this would include a new valve riser and a ball valve if needed. I can tell you that a couple of them are corroded pretty bad, but they're not leaking at this point, so it's not something I've worried about too much. But this will include washing the inside of, it's in a manhole, washing out the manhole, pumping it out and replacing whatever needs to be replaced inside that air release valve manhole. The lagoon has signage on every entrance and along about every 250 feet along the outside. This was something the DNR had mentioned as well. The signage that we currently have, it's just kind of a warning that this is a sewer lagoon pond, not a public swimming lake. So those are kind of getting worn out from the sun, broken, battered. Those do need to be replaced and I have 1,000 on that because we have one mile, one whole mile of fence that covers the exterior of the lagoon ponds. And then, so the line locator is actually the locator that I use when we get locate requests from 811. And this locator that I use now is about 22 years old. We've done our best to take care of it and the technology's improved enough where I think it warrants us replacing that. That's something that you guys own. I replace batteries in it every once in a while. The new one has rechargeable technology in it and I wouldn't say so much that it's more accurate, but it's more useful in finding certain, we use a tracer wire underground, so when we locate those, sometimes if it's broken, this current locator has trouble finding the electrical current and the new ones are technologically better to find lines that are, have a weak signal to them. So this is our Phase One project list.
Now, when you talk about the pump panel upgrades, Ben, I think you said a quarter to one-third replacement rate now. What would be your vision to do the others?
Well, they would be the second phase next fall. I just don't want to commit to doing all of them before July 1st and it can be done if needed, but I want to attack the ones that are showing corrosion right now, showing the posts is leaning over. We have some, actually inside the panel, the frost has pushed the wire and pulled it downward, so it's, the wires are getting tension on them inside the panel. So I've added, I've added some wire in some certain instances and there may be eight or 10 of those that's happening too. So my plan was to just attack the ones that are, that are in need now and then kind of assess from there.
The air release valves, you said some of them are corroded. Any idea how old some of these air release valves are?
Well, they're all original. So 1999 is when they were installed and implemented, so they've gone through plenty of winters, plenty of summers. They sometimes sit full of water if rainwater's gotten into them. I know with flood of '08, there's two that are actually between the lagoon and the river for that portion of the pipe and it normally doesn't have water in it, but the field is flooded occasionally out there by McKellar Road, so.
So if we didn't have ARP money that we thought this could be applied to, how are we proposing to start work on some of those?
Well, we had approved the 25,000 for the manhole replacement. The lagoon valve repairs was something I spoke with you about and we kind of came up with a number and it's hard to come up with a number on this one because I would like to start with the cheapest way possible. Of course, the hydraulic, using a hydraulic pump to push these pipes back out would be the cheapest way, but I doubt that that would work because of all the ground pressure that these pipes have on them. You know, they're underground, they've got rock and they're pushing against them. So I would like to try that, but also we don't know the condition of the valves since they haven't been operational for a couple of years, so.
You say some of the pump panel upgrades that they're in bad shape and lights are broke. Why don't you replace them as you go?
Well, we have been.
Oh, okay.
We have been and there's.
And signage too, you know? When signage gets bad, why not fix it?
Yeah, we absolutely, we absolutely can.
Okay.
It was just something. Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Now, it sounds like some of the work, the work that you mentioned that has been done, is that going to be work that you're going to be performing yourself?
Yes, all of these will be performed myself. Other than the manhole replacement, I do have a contractor lined up. We've ordered the manhole. According to the spec, we had to have a hole put in the side of the manhole. So we've had this planned and it's one that I don't have, I don't have equipment to complete myself.
So the contractor part of it, are we going to have to bid that by law?
I was going to hire them. I don't believe so.
That's something I want you to check into. And then the other thing, did you mention there was some tooling that we had to buy or gear or?
Yeah, the line locator is a piece of equipment that allows us to locate the lines and this will, this is eventually going to have to be replaced at some point, so.
Okay. My question there then, according to the contract that we have with you, is that your responsibility to replace that equipment or ours?
Well, I don't believe so. You guys provided the locator that we have now and it's owned by Washburn Sanitary Sewer District, so.
But what's the contract saying for replacing equipment?
I believe equipment is on Blackhawk County and any small hand tools, reusable, like Vaseline that I replace and pipe dope and oil and a lot of different things. I replace that reusable types, lubricants and things like that. But as far as equipment goes, it's always been Washburn's responsibility.
Any other questions for Ben?
Just going to, oh, go ahead.
I would just put this out there. I think these are probably good investments to make and I could be supportive, but the one thing that I'd like to see coupled with this is that the fees need to be set as such that we're building up reserves so that twenty-two years from now, when we need to make these types of investments again, we can't rely on there being federal funding. This is just a lucky situation we're in right now. So for me, it would need to be tied to, you know, a small increase of the fees so that you're building up those reserves to be able to handle these repairs a decade, two decades from now.
I'd like to add...
You could certainly put that on next week, Chris.
I'd like to add that I completely agree with Chris that, you know, we need to be planning on paying for these things ourselves either way. We have the lagoon pond dredging that I've told you about. It's going to be quite expensive, but with this opportunity to take care of these projects, I think it's something we need to take advantage of. And also, take a look in the mirror and say, are we going to be able to handle this stuff in the next fifteen, twenty years? Hopefully, this stuff will last thirty, thirty-five, forty years, something like that, but...
James, this is probably a question for you. The Phase One is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Is that the total? Is a hundred, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three-five still for the Washburn project?
It would be close. The bigger items that are not on there are the dredging of the lagoon. That one by far is the most expensive.
And then the next one would be the backup generators.
Right.
Those are two huge chunk type expenses that eventually will need to be done. The backup generators, I'm not getting a lot of pressure from the DNR on right now, but that is something that most, well, every new facility that gets installed, you have to have backup generator for. So it's going to be forced on us eventually.
So that'd be a later phase.
Yeah, that's kind of what we've talked about.
That was something that wouldn't be able to happen this fiscal year anyway.
It would take planning, and then also, we have fourteen different sites, so we would need fourteen different generators unless we split the power and run power underground to a different site. So we would have to strategically plan that, and it would take longer than a few months to do, so...
Chris, had you given any thought to what you were thinking of as far as a fee increase, or is it still premature for that?
No, for me, it's premature for that, but it would be, you know, looking at whether it's twenty or thirty years out, just what it would take to have reserves to cover most of these costs at that time. So there's some math that would need to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ben or James? Thank you, Ben.
I'm always available if you do have other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. So the other unique departments are going to be IT as well as maintenance. They are not only concerned about their own specific department, but as well as everybody, as well as other departments as well. So what I do want to do is bring Rory up to speak about the maintenance items, and then I'll have Kim, and then I'll kind of go through the departments individually here, so... We're going to take a recess. We're going to take a five-minute recess, so some of us older members can...
Take five minutes.
Five minutes. We're back in session. Rory's up, I believe.
Good morning, Board. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. So looking at the first phase, what I wanted to start off with is kind of looking back at some of the conversations that I've had, actually, the Subcommittee, the ARP Subcommittee has talked about as well, and that is looking at our space needs throughout our facilities with regards to the courthouse, Pinecrest, JCS. And the common theme really is every department has input on what their needs are and what their wants are, some of them more than others. And so started looking back at what we've done in the past, and in nineteen ninety-five, we actually, the county had reached out to Envision Architect, and they performed a space needs assessment for us that also came with a courthouse master plan. And so when we really started diving in to this, what we realized, it was a very good guide, which the county had used kind of as their format or their guide moving forward on several projects that took place back in those times. Obviously, that's been a long time ago. At that time, it was a ten-year outlook, and so as the committee started talking about this, we actually really touched on it pretty heavy here earlier in the month of October, was how we could see some great benefit doing the space assessment again. And so we did reach out. I did receive a proposal for that. That proposal basically consists of interviewing each department. I believe there are seventeen different entities listed on there between, again, the courthouse, Pinecrest, and JCS. That would involve in-depth interviews with each of those departments, looking at their needs and their wants. The total price for this was a hundred and twenty-five thousand to accomplish the space needs assessment, and it would take approximately, James, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it identified at about three months. Does that seem...
Yeah, that's what I have as well.
Okay. So about three months to process this and get a master plan in our hands. So that would involve this group, Envision Architect, actually attending our ARP meetings, giving us frequent updates. I believe that it included eight meetings with them. It would be progress meetings that they would share with us as they go through, because one of the things that I think we would really have to steer them in is kind of our priorities with the various departments, and that would require us meeting throughout this process of putting this together. So I've got the nineteen ninety-five assessment and the master plan. I will leave that up here in the boardroom or board office for anybody to take a look at, but really, we would use this as our template and our guide moving forward. Obviously, several things have changed since nineteen ninety-five with the technology, so we would expect to see some differences in this assessment. But really, I think that's a good starting point for us to get a nice plan put together so we're able to provide that to the Board of Supervisors moving forward.
And they could start that immediately?
We could start that immediately, yes.
That's a good plan. The one thing that, in this building is almost sixty years old, and previous boards, all those involved have maintained it incredibly well. I mean, it's not ideal. It gets depressing in the basement. I think a basement should be for storage. I don't think we should have offices down there, so I think the county attorney, human resources, and others should be out of the basement. We should simply use it for storage, find other places for them. But my point is, previous boards have done a remarkable job of maintaining this facility, because I've worked in others that are the same age, and they're horrendous. But here we are in the courthouse, and because when you walk around, when you look around, when you use our facilities here, it's been very well maintained. So that credit goes to the others, those that are currently on the board and even the others before them. So, and I like this idea of getting an updated space needs assessment so that we can prepare this facility for the future board members.
And you're thinking external locations?
Whatever. I mean, we have, I've heard some good ideas thrown around from Rory and others about addressing some of our space needs. I was just, you know, I mean, when I walk in the county attorney's area, I get depressed, even the color of the paint. I mean, whoever painted it last should be ashamed of themselves.
Well, and that's kind of the idea behind the assessment, is there's been a lot of thinking outside the box with regards to, you know, boy, can this department move over here, and we can move this over here. This really kind of rains it all in and puts it together in a nice package for us. But one thing I did mention, it also includes mechanicals, includes engineering. Dan had mentioned previous board and projects that we've done, and we've really focused on our big-ticket items. You know, when you look back, we've replaced our boilers, we've replaced our chillers in our facilities. So those big-ticket, big items, you know, yeah, I think it's been great. I think the board has done a great job of allowing us to get those changed out. What this is going to do is really look at more of the field devices, things that are actually in this building that are original to the building, and really looking at how can we improve efficiencies. So what I would expect to see from a report like this is really just kind of laying out that ten-year plan for us as maintenance, looking at how we can improve our buildings and get a good return in our investment. You had mentioned the basement. One thing that, as our department was looking at this, one thing that we would really like to focus on too is removing storage from the jail basement with regards to files. The state houses probably better than eighty percent of the file storage in that facility, and it's underneath all of our water lines, our sewer lines, and we constantly are having issues with that. So it's not a good, in my opinion, it's not a good location to have file storage. So I think that would be, when I have my interview with this, if this goes through, that would be something that I would really push for is to find a different location for that storage. Plus, it allows us as a maintenance department to better serve that facility by giving us better access to maintaining it. So I did, I misspoke. It's actually, when I looked at the process that this is going to take, it's actually about twenty-four weeks throughout the whole process, so that's closer to six months, yeah.
And they could start the whole...
It could start right away. It would, the first three weeks would be information gathering. They would then perform a kickoff meeting. They would survey the departments, facility tours. Then they would do department interviews, all while holding meetings with the ARP Subcommittee, kind of filling that group in on where they're at in the process.
And that might be something too they'd need to do at a board meeting as well, I think, for the board to keep everybody apprised of it, but sure.
Is that an item we'd like to put on the agenda for next week?
Which one? Approving that?
Space needs assessment.
There was a question at one point on whether or not we could use the funds for that study, I think James had brought up.
Yeah, so that is one thing that we can use these funds. We wouldn't be able to use the actual, if you remember, I talked about two different buckets. One bucket being the money that we can allocate towards this bill and the other that we can allocate towards the lost revenue. It would have to be in the lost revenue portion, and that's where I would feel comfortable pulling those funds out of, because the one thing that you'll hear too is all of these larger projects are going to take a lot of engineering, and these engineering costs can only be applied to this ARP bill if the project moves forward and is completed. So that's kind of where we're going to catch ourselves a little bit, is to make sure that, you know, we are allocating it correctly, and these projects that have engineering costs are being completed and moved forward. So again, we can use these funds, but I would allocate them towards lost revenue because if we decide not to complete a project, I would feel more comfortable if come audit time, so...
Let's put it on the agenda next week for consideration.
Sounds like there's a lot of support.
Okay, then moving forward on my Phase One list, obviously, some of the items that I have on here are going to be as a result of this study, if that does go through. But if I can just run down real quick with regards to the courthouse, we did look at our x-ray machine and our metal detector. That system, I didn't write down the data when we bought it, but it's got to be better than nine years old, and we are paying approximately four thousand dollars a year for a maintenance fee on that. So we want to look at upgrading that x-ray machine and the metal detector. What we feel is we could improve our efficiencies with regards to the guards down there with new equipment. It might even get to the point where one guard could be dedicated just to the x-ray machine itself. It could possibly get to the point where we could eliminate one guard, get down to two, kind of depending on what our needs are for that. But rather than keep throwing, you know, four thousand dollars a year at a maintenance agreement, I would really like to be able to look at just upgrading that system. Metal detectors, there's been a huge improvement in technology with regards to metal detectors that I'd like to take advantage of. Second on the...
Rory, I've got one question on that. The system we currently use is somewhat like a portable system. Is that correct to say?
I don't, actually, our system that we have is more stationary than what I would be looking at, what I would be looking at moving forward, I think would be considered more of a portable, when you're talking metal detector. They've made huge improvements on metal detectors. In fact, I think the sheriff's department has one or two possibly, and the effectiveness of these metal detectors are far beyond ours that we currently have.
Well, if we were to replace our unit downstairs like we have in the past, what goes downstairs right now? What actually gets replaced downstairs?
What I would be looking to replace would be the baggage x-ray system and the walk-through metal detector.
Okay, so basically everything. Is there, and we've done this before because we put the other one up on the other end, but we had the courthouse parking lot under construction.
Correct.
Is it possible maybe to, which would be costly, but maybe now's the time to do is put in more of a permanent security? So then in the future, the only thing we're looking at is changing software or something like that, but more of a permanent station there rather than, I call this portable, because basically if you change it tomorrow, you're going to be swapping out, what, about eighty percent of it if that are?
Actually, if I were to change it out tomorrow, a hundred percent of what we currently have would go away. Yep.
Could we build some permanent style system that's permanent? It makes them walk through, you know, it's kind of like, I don't know what I'm saying, but something, and changes in the future, it'd be more software rather than mechanical and everything?
That would certainly be something I could look into. Like I said, I think technology, since we've purchased the one that we currently have, has increased greatly.
Yeah, I'm not talking about technology, but bottom line is, this is what our second one or third one we've replaced.
Since I've been here, this would be our second one.
Okay, and I'm not so sure we haven't done three, but we have that maintenance every month. We did it on the old one too, so we're always going to be stuck with that. Is there somehow we could put a more permanent structure and get away from some of that maintenance? I don't, it's just an idea.
No, I understand what you're saying, and that's something I can certainly look into, because ultimately, to get away from having to pay that exorbitant maintenance fee every year, I think that would definitely be a goal to shoot for.
Because basically, if we're going to buy a new one tomorrow, it currently works. We're buying it just because we're paying an X amount of maintenance fee and just because you put a number on it of nine years old. Otherwise, the thing works perfectly today, doesn't it?
It does. Like I had mentioned, functionality, I think, has improved on them with regards to being able to detect dense metals. I think just making the guards aware, that particular technology has improved. Right now, the way it sits, the guard pretty much has to be looking at that monitor every package or every item that comes through. I think there has been definite improvement on alerting people when metals do come through, and so that's really what interested me was... that's really what interested me was just making it more efficient. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
The other item that we're looking at, and I think the board has been included in several emails from our phone provider, but we're looking at upgrading our, our service coming in, not, not necessarily our equipment because we just did that a few years back, but looking at the service that comes in. So what we're looking at, it's a, it's a new protocol. It's using internet versus hard phone lines coming into our facilities. And it's called SIP. That's the protocol. And we're currently working with a company right now that's formerly Century, CenturyLink is their former name. Now they have a new name. It's kind of hard to keep up because they keep changing their names. But what we're trying to do is, is get a, kind of a full package that covers our voicemail and our, our service coming in. And we did have a, probably about a month ago, we had requested that the IT committee get together. So we shared this information with the IT committee, and from that committee, there is a handful of action items that we had requested from this company that we're working with. And yet, to date, there's still a few items out there that are remaining. So I do not have a narrowed down cost for you yet today, but I hope to have that soon of what that would, would result. But just to kind of real quickly go over some of the benefits, by going this route, we would, we would improve our mobile and desktop capabilities. So for an example, if, if for some reason, people had to work from home, for whatever reason, it gives you the ability to utilize your phone at home. It also gives you the ability to utilize your phone through your desktop, which you could take that a bit further and have a mass notification system implemented on this. If you recall, a couple of years back, we had a bomb threat and notice went out throughout the building to evacuate the building. And that's really when it became evident to us that we need to take a hard look at improving our notification system because not all floors or not all offices were able to hear that evacuation. And so we really need to improve that system that every employee gets notified that they need to leave the building. And so this system is capable of sending out different means of, of communication, whether that's through a text or through your desktop or what have you, or through an audible through your phone system. So that's really what intrigued me about going with a system like this. And then the other benefits, again, of working from home capabilities, mobile capabilities. So that SIP gets a, gets a little involved, and once we get down to receiving more information on that, I'll definitely bring that back to the board as an action item or an action request to be put on the agenda. And then I'll probably have folks from the IT speak to that as well because it does get a little bit technical. So, but that is on our list. Another item, do you want me to go through all of these? Okay.
Yep.
Another item is a point-of-use fire suppression system for our IT data room. And we did something similar to this over at the Black Heart County Jail a few years back in their data room. But basically, it's a, it's a point-of-use self-service fire extinguishing system that would separate that particular area from the main building's fire suppression system, which is essentially geared towards not damaging very expensive and sensitive equipment, but yet still putting the fire out. So we used a number that was, was expensed over at the jail for their system as a guide for, for where we're at on this. So $50,000 is what we put on there. The next item is, I call it a air scrubber, but technical term is an ultraviolet germicidal irrigation kit to be put in place with our air handling units. And that really is, is to decontaminate our air flow through our buildings, to cut down on cross-contamination with germs and such, and using ultraviolet. If you recall, when we did the, the upgrade over at the JCS building, we had seven units over there and we put the similar technology in all seven units at JCS. We're just looking at including that for our other facilities such as the courthouse, the jail, and Pinecrest. And I had approximately $12,000 just to do this one building on that. The other item I had was a VAV box upgrade. I'm actually going to, if, if the space assessments goes through, what I'd like to do is kind of pull that one off my Phase One and really let the mechanical engineering portion of the space assessments dive into that so we can get a little bit more detail to go along with it and maybe narrow in on that cost a bit because this was an estimate that I had put together of 150,000. But again, I think it would better suit us to utilize this service to really fine tune that. Looking at the jail, we did our large boiler replacement over there. Kind of an extension on that project is going through our field devices. If you can imagine, throughout the facility, just like our others, we have devices that regulate the temperature in a particular area. What we're looking at are constant issues with our mixing valves, mixing cold and hot. So we want to, we want to go through the whole facility and replace those mixing valves, just get them updated. They're original to the building. And it's a mechanical device that opens and shuts constantly throughout the day, and they do wear out. So I had 60,000 in there for that. Again, I've got the air scrubbing kit. I had 24,000 for the jail and primarily because we have six air handlers over there versus the two here. Adding variable drives to our air handling units, again, that's just to help improve air quality. Many of our items that we looked at for this Phase One, that's what we kind of focused on is how can we improve the air quality throughout the facilities. This one is kind of out there in left field, but they are somewhat original. I believe they are original to the facility and they get used a lot, and that is our washing machines and our dryers. We have very large commercial systems over there, and we are starting to see an uptick in downtime and repairs on that system.
So you think that those are original?
I believe they are. I, we tried pulling up a file and we couldn't find anything that gave us an exact date. Tony, you might?
I believe they are original.
Yeah.
Have they used two shifts every day?
Yeah, they, they, they get a lot of use, so. I do not have a dollar amount associated with those. I'm still working on putting that together.
Why wouldn't that come out of room and board anyway?
For something that is needed anyway.
It very well could. I, when I started putting, I just, when we were asked to put these lists together, I just started thinking about everything I could that would help improve our facilities, so.
I thought we replaced one of those washing machines. We had one down, one up or something.
Yeah, we had to replace one of them.
I thought we replaced one here about eight, 10 years ago.
It's very possible. I know we have, we have a residential one in there that gets used just specifically for like shop rags. That one we have actually replaced a few times, but these units are, are what are being used for the inmate laundry, uniforms and bedding and such.
Well, the model number on it, Rory should clearly tell you what year they were purchased or put in there. So if you check the model number, I'm sure you can find out how old they are.
Yeah, I, honestly, I, I mean, with a little more digging, I'm sure I can find that information. I just, that was just something that I know that we, we need to replace probably before we have to do it in an emergency situation. JCS, I, I put a placeholder of 10,000 in there, and that is looking at, currently, we've got a section of the building that is being used by the clerk of courts for file storage. And I believe the clerk of courts are looking at digitalizing many of those files. We want to get that room cleared out and get it repainted, just a slight remodel, and actually utilize it for the elections, for the additional employees that they bring in during election time. And I'm not, Grant, you could maybe speak to that, but I believe it's for absentee ballots, if I'm not mistaken, for counting?
This is something that we need to talk in more detail from other aspects of our requests because this would be more of a stopgap. It would not address our full problem. We have, when we have a general election with a lot of absentee ballots, we have people working in about six different areas of the courthouse besides over there with the warehouse. If we were going to put temporary or part-time workers over there to work for an election, it would open up the question of where would we be doing absentee voting? That's not a very desirable place for absentee voting in terms of accessibility and parking and so on. So we were looking more towards a solution that involved another building. And I know that's going to be discussed at some point. It's not maybe on today's agenda. But if we did use that, it would be looked at by us as a stopgap temporary solution.
And again, another, I guess, in my opinion, another critical reason why the space assessments plan is needed because I think there'd be a great deal of focus with the elections department during that process. Looking at Pinecrest, I have an addition to our maintenance shop. And when I say maintenance shop, that's our external shop. We actually have a two-bay shop there right now. What we'd be looking at is extending that. And ideally, what I'd like to see is an additional four bays. And the 200,000 that I put on there as a placeholder, I obtained that from previous projects that were done in like, for an example, Kathy's Gilbertville shop, which I think came in a little higher than that, but it involved a little bit more than what I would be looking at as far as just a, a shop to house our vehicles inside. And then also, our long-term goal is to have a, a common maintenance shop and then to be able to dictate work orders out of there as our base shop, improving cross-training throughout our other facilities. And so if you can imagine, all of our staff would, would start off on this base location and then be dispersed to our facilities when needed. So. Repair and put back into service our hydraulic elevator. If you recall, at budget time, I came to the board and we, we had two options was to either decommission the hydraulic elevator or repair it. And at that time, the board had chose to decommission it. Now with, with these ARP funds and looking at pandemic, looking at, you know, ways to better provide separation, distancing, that type of thing, I put this on the list to basically bring that elevator back to service to allow the employees to have an alternate means of traveling throughout the facility. So that came in at about 60,000.
Need to look at updating one that we got that we're using now out there. It's horrible.
As far as just the cab?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank them like they are down here.
Mm-hmm. Security, throughout the, that facility, floors one through four, we have wing doors that have the new FOB system put on them. What we would be looking at is security doors on the fifth floor wings. So isolating the office spaces on the fifth floor. Still working on a dollar amount on that, just given the architecture of that fifth floor. It's, it's a bit challenging to retrofit in security on that, but that would be an item that I'd like to see on the list. And then some of you may recall this one, the fifth floor HVAC renovation. It's actually kind of been on a long-term plan since I've been here. Back in 1989, when, when Pinecrest was renovated, for whatever reason, the fifth floor west was never tied into the HVAC system at that time. So it's an independent system, essentially, if you can picture the old radiators that you see in older homes, that's literally what we have set up on that fifth floor west. That happens to be the clinic area as well. So it's always been a challenge of ours regulating temperature in that particular area. It is, I think, the reasons that we, we hadn't done that in the past is it does come with a very large ticket price to tie that into our system, but it does go hand in hand with improving air quality in our building. So I have approximately 585,000. That's another item, though, that I would like to address in the, the space assessment needs and bring that back at the board at that time. That's what I have. Did I miss anything, James?
That's what I had as well. I think you covered quite a bit.
Any questions from the board?
Up is the, is the summary of what is what he had. So if you look at it, I, I put it on there courthouse, jail, JCS, Pinecrest, and then I put everything on there for the estimated cost and totaled it at the bottom.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I will have Kim step up and talk to, talk about her projects, and then I'll, I'll start in on individual departments as well.
Okay, so a lot of the things on Phase One are things that would help people either meet here in public or work from home. I think you had that demonstration of the owl for, not for this meeting room, but for meetings with departments where part of us are gone. There was an add-on piece that made it a little easier to do it. You didn't have to have quite the technical skill to get it to work. So that's the first one. And knowing that they're thinking about or planning on the room design, a space committee, we just put in what the preliminary steps would be for upgrading switches because we know that we'd still have the switches where we are, but we need to increase them or update them so that they would be able to deal with the bigger bandwidth of the fiber. So that's what that for $20,000 is. We still are expecting to talk to the company that put this together about what we can do to help Zoom, but Rory was going to reach out to them, so I don't have a number for that. With the suppression, fire suppression in the server room, we would need to move people out of there because if it happened, it'd kill them. So anyway, we need a camera in there so that we can keep an eye on the lights on the, on the actual equipment from across the hall. So the other part of that would be, people are staying late to let the cleaning people in. Since we'd be able to monitor the actual equipment, you know, we may be able to let people come in a little further in the room. Okay. We've had a request for this, the projector that I have that we let other- The projector that I have that we let other departments use is pretty old now and TJ got a new wireless one that is really nice and we have borrowed it quite a bit, so we put this on the list. We asked to have badge access to the office area, so that's the price I got from him. Equipment for the attorney's office, I put in six for, we were talking about clerical staff, but that number might increase depending on, I emailed Brian for an exact list of who he wanted to have that. Because the attorneys all have laptops and desktops, so you know, they're basically Because of the security on the election, iVoters, you have to have a special tool or key to access it from an IP address that is not on the county. So there'd be, that's the fee to get five of those access points, so if they did need to work from home. And last year, we did have a person working from home using that technology, so we know it works. There's a couple of things that the assessor's office, I'm sorry, treasurer's office asked for, their check reader and a copier. And so we went ahead and add those on the list. I do see that I forgot one thing too, is HR for their modules for payroll. So we're doing some research on that and have seen a demonstration of some of the modules that GovTech, not GovTech, NeoGo. Yeah. So we're still researching that, so I don't really have a total price for that. The one thing that we really would like to get done, or what we need to get done, I should say, is the firewall replacement. Right now, they're managed by ACES and it's actually ACES, you know, equipment. And so we got pricing on them to just buy them out at the end of the year. But looking at that pricing and seeing what the pricing is for what we can get, we feel that it's better to go ahead and replace them ourselves. There's five different ones and it comes with three years of support, so that pricing is pretty set. Looked at having another ISP provider bring fiber into the building so that it, for redundancy. So it was for a five-year commitment, it was $600 a month. That would be a recurring thing that we'd need to keep in mind. A shorter commitment would be a higher price. Chris indicated that he was interested in a wireless access point for the garden area over there. And so that's kind of just an estimate. They thought that would more than cover the area for that. In talking to Brian, James Friday, we came up with a few more people that we probably should be getting to be able to work from home. So I talked to Sandy a little bit more. So I do have, we probably will come up with at least 10 more people. Because we did pretty well with the CARES money that we got and then that last agenda item that I had had 10, so some more of that. So we have some things that, I put in what I thought we could accomplish, you know, but there's other things in phase two that, for example, one of them was the internet connections at Pinecrest redundancy there, so. And then more disaster recovery things, so, but that's further down the road.
I'll put the summary up here quick. So that five, or that phase one total 75,000 and that's split between allowable expenses under that ARP bill as well as lost revenue.
One of the things that I originally had in phase one was do the wiring, but if offices are going to be shifted, it wasn't, you know, better to wait for that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Tony, I will let you come up and speak about your third floor.
So as you know, we added technology to the building that allows for inmates to utilize tablet technology that enabled them to do now video visitation. And video visitation has now taken over everything but professional visitation in the jail. And what that has allowed is for all but no use of the third floor of the jail building on the public side any longer. So that is space that is no longer utilized. And so we're challenged, obviously, every day with space issues. We've got people housed out of county and particularly juveniles right now. I don't know why there's no place to house juveniles in the state, but we are caught in a bit of a catch-22 right now with some juveniles that we can hold because they're waived to adult court on forcible felonies, but there are federal acts that we're actually violating because state law allows for it, but federal doesn't. When we look at that third floor, we invited a company by the name of Shive Hatterley that came in that they're, they work a lot with government, but their main claim to fame in law enforcement circles is jails. And they took a tour and kind of did a space utilization assessment of the jail building and have determined that our best location, if we were going to expand and be able to spread our inmates out, if that were the terminology that we were using for ARP funds, would be first floor mechanical and then take all the mechanical storage that's being used in that facility next to the laundry room and move that then to the third floor. So turn third floor into storage and turn the mechanical room on first floor into functional housing space. Possibly two, maybe three small pods for juvenile special population housing, what have you. And we are currently working with Shive Hatterley as professional services to develop a plan for that remodel. This is not one of those things that we want to do or think would be nice to do. This is something that we are absolutely going to have to do. We have 35, or I'm sorry, 36 beds right now for females. We are housing females out of county right now because we are full. We have juveniles that we are currently paying other counties to hold because we cannot hold them ourselves. And routinely, we hit our 272 bed max limit and are paying other counties, all the way up to Clayton County in fact, to hold inmates for us. So by being able to exercise and reutilize, repurpose space and take advantage of the fact that we're now utilizing technology different and repurposing those areas that the building was built around to be able to allow us to use that space differently, hopefully we can increase some bed space and allow for some of that to come back in-house. So this we're moving forward with. I don't have cost numbers. Rough estimates were probably around a million dollars for a remodel on it and we would move forward whether there were ARP funds or not. This is something we would move forward on, so. We're working with Shive Hatterley and we would probably bring in some local contract folks as well, people that built the building and architects of that nature. So we're moving forward on it and I would guess within the next 30 days, we should have some preliminary numbers for it, but they didn't walk through about a month ago.
Okay. Any questions for Sheriff Thompson? Anything you want to add to, James?
Nope, I think we're on this one. It's definitely an allowable expense. We're just kind of waiting to see what costs are going to come in at, so. I will speak to VA. I know Yolanda was here. I think he might've had to leave for a different obligation, but he is wanting to look at the outdoor space that he has. He does a lot of get-togethers outdoors. He wanted to create a shelter space to kind of allow gatherings outdoors. And so he would be able to speak to that a little bit more thoroughly, but since it is on the list and he was planning to do that, I did just kind of want to make that a mention of the group, so.
So you're planning on putting electrical and stuff out there, is that what?
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. He was looking to put in electrical fans, lights, and I don't know how big it is, but he would have those dimensions.
That's a pretty good size.
Sandy, I'll let you come up and discuss your projects here.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I have two projects for you to consider. One of them is the office reconfiguration of the cubicles. I, the nearest I can tell, the girls have not had new cubicles or desks in nearly 20 years. So this would be similar to what TJ has done in the assessor's office. It's creating more of an aisle down the center, so it separates the staff and I believe that falls under the guidelines. And it will give them the plexiglass, I believe, around all sides of the cubicles. It also includes replacing, we have a sink in our office, it would replace the cabinet for the sink. There is a provision in there that we can look at. I asked them to give me a quote for a permanent fixture for the plexiglass along the counter. It just looks a lot more professional to have something that's actually built in there instead of what's up there now. So that's something that we can talk to Rory about and look into if you don't like that aspect of it. I have seen them in other recorders' offices when you walk in. It just, to me, looks a little bit more professional. Has a speaker system kind of built in, so you can hear a little bit better through it also. So is there any questions on that?
Nope.
The other project I'm presenting is the digitization of my transfer documents. And there's nothing glamorous, I know about digitizing, but it is so very important. Since becoming recorder, I have every year digitized a phase of my records. I usually put it in the regular budget using my records management money. I have done several phases and I can tell you Black Hawk County does lead the way. We are in the top-tier counties, probably in the Midwest. I hear that quite often. For what we have available on our website for people to access 24/7 and copy, we are really doing a great job with that. So this completes the transfer documents, which would be land deeds and city lot deeds. The number one requested record from my office. If you, if we have a natural disaster, the first thing you need to do is prove you own your home so that you can make a claim with your insurance company. So this would take every transfer book we have since the beginning of our county and have it digitized. We have already done most of that, so this just completes that project. Is there any questions on that one?
Nope.
So what percentage you got done, Sandy, do you know?
Oh my goodness, I don't, I don't have that figure. It's, there's so many records and we have so much. Some are on microfilm, some are in photo step books, some are on online index books. So we take, and I work with my deputies to determine what is the most important thing that we should do. We have mortgage records digitized, we have contracts miscellaneous already digitized. We are really getting close to having pretty much what we need out there done.
So as you digitize, are you able to get rid of the?
That's something we can look at too. We, whether we donate our books, whether we store our books, we could definitely free up space. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Digitizing is a very important aspect. Not only is it smart to do that in case there was, you know, a natural disaster, but it is nice to have that capability to prevent the need to coming into the courthouse to look at these documents. So it is kind of a twofold solution on that. Did you want to talk about, it's same thing?
Sure. So we're looking at doing some digitization to our transfer books, are different from her transfer books and we, you know, we just have a fraction of the volume that the recorder's office has, but digitizing transfer books is something that we've been talked about off and on for a long time. We've gotten a couple of quotes, well, we're in the process of getting a couple of quotes. And so this one for $85,000 is from Cott Systems, which is the company that Recorder's Office uses. And they have an advantage in this situation in that they've already established a platform in the Recorder's Office that we'd be able to access. But we did get another quote just for comparison purposes and one good thing that came out of that was they made the suggestion that we digitize our minute books as well. And that's a really good idea to look into. So we may have an amended project to give you later.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Mike, did you want to pop up?
Good morning.
Morning.
We've got a couple of things on here and I know I've emailed you and so this might be a little redundant, but we'll go over it anyway. Couple of these projects are well on their way. I mean, these things, all we need to do is push the button and go. And it's because we've been working on them for a couple of years. The Hickory Hills Lagoon is a classic example. We knew the age of that lagoon. It's an evaporation system that operates, obviously, one of our very, very important and usable parks within our system. And we have been working with the DNR over the past several years and Snyder and Associates as an engineer. And so we knew this lagoon's going to have to be replaced. We've actually been chasing funds for this lagoon for about a year and a half now and what you find out very quickly is there aren't a lot of pools of money that that pertains to. We chase things like REAP, but you're going against land acquisitions that are quite beautiful and should be taken care of and managed for conservation. And we're putting a sewer lagoon up there against them and you don't fare well, you don't score well. And we understand that, but we have to keep, you know, swinging the bat, so to speak, in order to keep trying. So all that being said, when this came around, it really fit the bill, it appears anyway as far as how some of this ARP money can be spent. The total project cost there is going to be around between $450,000 and $500,000, but it has to be done at some point. We have been given information from the, this money came out of nowhere. No one was ready for it. I talked with directors in Polk County, Lynn County, Scott County. No one was ready for this, but here it came, boom, landed in our lap. And we were all scrambling to try to get something put together and fire in there. And again, still on short notice, it was astronomical, the amount of requests that were there. It was like $50 million and we did not get funded. But again, to be ready, this would make us ready for the next thing that possibly could fall out of the sky. And so when we started seeing these things, that's why we decided we need to have these things ready to go. So that's why it's incredibly important to us, that document.
Well, unless somebody objects, I think it might be one we put on next week's agenda or the second or whenever you were.
I didn't want to get too much on the next agenda, but that's why I put it out to November 2nd. That's why it gives Mike time to prepare. That one would be, would be quite critical to us.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Could I make a remark here, just apropos of questions about the usage of these funds? I was at a board and directors meeting for the National Association of Counties last week and this was a big topic of discussion. And I'd like to make a few points on that. First of all, I've done this before, but I want to recognize the National Association of Counties for the work that they did on this legislation. They were very instrumental in making sure that counties got direct funding rather than having it go through the state or other channels. And so the fact that Black Hawk County has $25 million to decide what to do with is largely due to the efforts of National Association of Counties. But also, Executive Director Matt Chase made a couple of important points. When questions like this come up, they strongly encourage that you ask NACO directly these questions. They're very involved in this with the Treasury Department and they can get. They're very involved in this with the Treasury Department and they can get questions to Treasury right away. They've answered thousands of unique questions from different counties. So it can be something as specific as what we're talking about. And the other point that he made is that they're really leaning towards more openness and, you know, they're not looking for ways to restrict funds. They're looking for ways to use funds.
I would think, yeah, that makes sense that they, the one, aren't tent to be good, to go forward with it and not just end up with a bunch of studies. You know, yeah, we paid for all these studies and so here we are, but.
So I would encourage just checking out those questions with them. And another point that he made was, you know, some people say, well, gee, we feel bad just trying to look for ways to spend this money. He says the federal government's going to spend this money one way or another. We might as well use our needs to take what we can from it.
Well, the way I'm looking at it is utilizing this money to nurture our local economy, using our local vendors, using our local workers to keep our local economy going. Because one thing I'm concerned about as we proceed in the future is cost items, inflation. What can we do as local elected officials to keep our local economy rolling along? And that's how I'm viewing this, this funding.
So James, that gives you a little time then before the second to check out some of those questions or answers for us or provide that for that meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. And the other thing that I kind of want to reiterate to what Dan had just said is, you know, we can't take these dollars and directly offset and lower our tax levy. That's just not allowable. But when you think about it in the long term, if we start taking care of these large capital projects that we continuously levy for every single year and we actually complete these projects and then we're, I mean, we are so far ahead of the game that at the end of the day, it does absolutely nothing but lower that levy long-term or keep that levy extremely low and stable. And so that's something that I kind of want to reiterate, too, is, you know, yeah, these, some of these projects seem a little bit, you know, costly or, you know, they may not be absolutely 100% needed. But at the end of the day, you know, we can do a lot of good by freeing up a lot of these tax dollars. So that's just, that's one point that I did want to make as well.
Yeah, very important.
So the one last thing that I will say is that the Health Department wanted to discuss their needs in the joint session that they have with you tomorrow morning.
Oh.
I believe that is.
Some of us, we have a couple of us or three of us, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
So that was the note that I got.
Why couldn't they be here today?
That was the note that I got.
Well, this is the time we set up for that. Why are we treating them different than we do everybody else?
Maybe they.
It should be at a regular board meeting.
That's right.
The rest of our other departments are today.
Maybe next Tuesday? I don't know. Are they the only ones that we didn't hear from that we need to right away?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would say that they're, I mean, obviously, Yolanda wasn't here and that, but obviously, they have.
Yours, too. You could do yours next week, too.
Obviously, as you can imagine, Public Health is obviously the bigger one, so.
Do you know she was tied up until noon with a commitment with some sort of presentation?
And I know it's important to all of us here, not just, I saw you had commitments.
Yes, perhaps we.
Tail ragging the dog on that.
I just wanted to mention, just from Human Resources, you know, we've kind of tried to figure out where we really completely fit in this. A lot of the funding, as Grant had pointed out, you know, especially related to like economic hardship and, you know, throughout the community. And some of the things we've been looking at, I was looking on NACO's website about they have public job programs qualified under this. So that could be like something to be thinking about, you know. We have a large wave of people that are looking at probably retiring. And so how are we kind of generating interest in some of these offices and creating opportunities for people to possibly, you know, train or pursue jobs here at the county? So that's something that we've just kind of, I've just kind of been tossing around. But they do have, that is covered under this as a public job programs, according to NACO. But certainly, some of our other stuff is modernizing HR programs and practices, which we've worked with IT to do previously before the pandemic, but kind of exploring some of those other ideas, too. But, yeah, I've kind of been trying to still figure out where HR exactly fits in this and especially with some of the things coming up, if any, kind of the vaccine mandates has an impact on us, whether or not we're going to do any testing if that qualifies and kind of pointing to see how the chips fall. I'm also open to anything that the Board is interested in pursuing with or discussing with Human Resources regarding this funding, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, I guess, moving forward, I know today was just kind of a work session to get the information out to you, let you digest it. And I know that we are planning to put forth some items on even next week's agenda, but is there anything else that you would like to see done in this fiscal year? Or any ideas that you guys have that hasn't been discussed today that I can assist with or?
I just have a question. You asked it, I guess, thinking about, you said, putting them off until the following week, November 2nd. I want to be sure James has time enough, I guess, to look up anything you need to, but I thought there's really no reason to not put them all on next week. Would it be and look at them in a section or a group? I don't know.
I was just worried the meetings would get too long if we put too much in front of us and discussed it. Because I'm sure there's going to be questions, comments, and concerns with.
Okay. I'm fine with it either way. I just meant.
And I wanted to get, especially conservation, I wanted to give Mike and his department time. They might need to discuss it with their Board.
Oh, I know they've got a five-year plan, so he sounds like he's quite ready to go.
This has been laid out to our Board, actually, back in September. We had a lengthy discussion about this, so they knew that the ball was kind of in your court, but they knew also that we were prepared to go ahead and give this presentation. So they're all, obviously, they're all in, so.
That's only two weeks out now, November, what, right? November 2nd? Yeah, November 2nd.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
You good with that?
Sure.
November 2nd, you're good with whatever?
Yeah, we'll work with it.
The one final thing that I do want to leave with all of you is, you know, even if all of these projects were completed, as is, we are still well short of this $25.5 million. And so, I mean, we're barely scraping the surface of this. And so it's something that if, you know, keep thinking about it. If there's anything else that you would like to see or any directive that you want to give me, please let me know. But, yeah, we've got some work to do, so.
That's why when we're looking at, you know, the plan that Rory's talking about, there's some things that, you know, that we walked around town, James, and looked at different buildings and stuff for opportunities to get people out of the basement and stuff like that. Sometimes they can't wait, right?
Yeah.
Opportunity to purchase the properties or whatever.
Yeah, and that is without the space needs study. So depending on what that eliminates, that could change things. But that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, if that just takes six months, that would be helpful to kind of lay out for the next.
Well, and even like when I asked Mike about the cabin, I was thinking proactively in, like, the kids now, they got all these projects at the, over at Central, where they got the carpenters and stuff. That would be a perfect opportunity to get them on locations and help with these things. And we talked about moving what, Cat, or I was thinking of moving Kathy out to that, out to Longfellow and building a building out there. So they were all in the location out there, clearing up that space.
Good idea. Or thought. Good thought. That makes sense.
Move a JCS out to.
Pinecrest?
Mm-hmm. And take it over that building and use it more adequately. It's, there's too many, we were, James and I were, what, three weeks ago or maybe more than that? Well, I was over there last year, walked through and at that time, I think there was only two people working in the building. And that would open up 20 spots for parking for people that were, you know, that are, that have to park on the streets and help with that, too. I wish the city would work with us on that lot over there.
We can get back in touch with them and see.
Yeah, that's wishful thinking.
But, I mean, we can ask. That was revenue generating.
We've asked several times.
Yeah, but I meant the last.
And they keep saying, we'll get back with you. We'll get back with you.
Well, I think the last, they did get back with us. I think the last response was it generates revenue for them until we could find a way to make that up or they found a way to make it up. They weren't going to.
They didn't get back with us last time, did they, Rory?
Yeah, they did, because I saw that response. That was the response, because it generated revenue.
Rory called him back again to talk to him about doing something different. And he goes, well, let me think about it. And he never got back with us.
Just recently, Rory?
Yeah.
Well, probably because nothing had changed. It was still the same revenue generating that they were getting from that was, I forget how many thousands of dollars.
The response we got back, he identified how much revenue that that parking lot was bringing in. And so I just threw out a suggestion that if that revenue could be made up, you know, elsewhere, would they be interested? And we hadn't gotten anything back on that particular question.
And when was that?
Oh, it's probably been the last two months at least.
Yeah, probably longer.
How did they generate revenue? These?
Yeah.
They charged for that space, those spaces.
Okay. Item number 12. Any reports or information from the Board?
Want you to adjourn.
Second? Almost. Did you ever say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.